We're good.
It is, hi everyone, it's six oh. About six oh six P M. And I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Danville School District Board of Directors on Tuesday, September fifth. Uh, we are gonna go ahead and just briefly introduce ourselves around the room. I'm Clayton Cargill, the Chair of the Board. I'll go left to right. If you're on the Zoom, I'll call your name.
Molly Gleason Clerk.
Natalie Conley, Go School High School Principal.
Anne Landry, Acting Superintendent.
Most economy board member.
Tim Sanborn, Board Member.
Jenny Lavely, Public Interest.
Public Interest. I've got also Sarah.
Sarah Welch, Elementary Principal.
And Mike Concesi.
Director Finance and Operations. Yep, right here. Director Finance and Operations, present.
Okay. Great. Thanks, everybody for coming. Um, before we start, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? I had the one earlier. That I'll need a motion. Jared White, Member of the Public, had a question about um. Some baseball equipment. Like to add that on if I can get a motion to do so.
Go ahead, make a motion to add Jared White.
To put to parent question.
Yeah, parent question.
And then hopefully Randy will be here to answer. I have an answer from Randy as well. And second, here with Molly.
Yeah.
All in favor of that quick addition? Jared, I'll put it at the bottom by my, I might, if I get Randy here, I might move it up to where um. Or we can do Randy on three separate things. Okay, so no additional changes. We had two sets of minutes. One of them was our, what was our July meeting, which happened on June the twenty seventh? And then um, we had one on July eighteenth. The June twenty seventh meeting was pretty extensive. Did everybody have a chance to go through those minutes? I know I did when they came out. Okay, any questions on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty seventh.
Okay, so looking at those minutes, right at the top, it says June twenty third on the app.
It's gonna say.
I saw that.
See that where it says June twenty third? With that one correction, then we could fix that, and then we could be June twenty seventh minutes over to go. Questions? Motion to approve? Came from Tim, seconded by Melissa. All in favor?
Aye.
Four. I'll, I as well, that's four. Alright, next is the um informational meeting that happened on July eighteenth, and really exciting, as you'll recall. Nobody can. Yeah, nobody can. Um, so those minutes are there. The meeting did occur, it was called to order, it was a required meeting, so we can't say no meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Tim. Motion to approve.
Uh, second.
Second, because Melissa wasn't here.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor, and I will vote here. Please say aye.
Aye.
I'm voting as well, that's three. Um, Melissa Epstein's. There we go. Those meetings happen. Those minutes happen. Those meetings are approved. Okay, uh, coming up now, uh, we have the Superintendent's Report, which was written by Mark Tucker, and we have. Some, we have Anne Landry here who can answer some of our questions, and as you go through this, one of the things that you notice is that Mark has a medical leave. It says his surgery is September the sixth. He started his medical leave tonight. Obviously, we wish him the best. Um, we wish him a. A healthy recovery, a quick recovery, but his recovery is gonna take a while, and we wish him the best. Um, some of the things that were probably really noteworthy here, the family income data collection. That is gonna put us in, that is gonna put us in crap, and it's as much as we can beseech people, you know, at the, at the school level, at the administration level, at the superintendent level, to please fill out that form. I think the way, the, the way we were told the funding worked last year is we're at the bottom of the barrel for the funding of the, of the schools as well now, because we were funding that wrong. So we're gonna have some real trouble with some of our Title One funding coming up here in this building, in this school. And um. I think that's probably gonna be an issue. Find that to be the case, Tim?
Yes, and hopefully people are filling out the form that was sent out to everyone. Um, even if you don't think you're going to qualify, it helps just to fill it out.
And we probably wanna back that up with some calls, and I think that was some of the, some of the planning was some calls from our uh, front desk staff to say, can you please fill this out, and yeah. See if we can get that going.
I noticed on the forum, it said something about an online version. Is that possible to send it out via email to families? I think I would feel more comfortable filling it out. Online than sending it into the front desk, if that's a possibility. I don't know, just to get it out to more people.
I.
It's not.
It's not an option.
It's, no, I don't think, I didn't think so.
We were told not this year. Um, we don't have any access to that, so.
Okay.
I agree, though.
Yeah.
It's just a piece of paper, and it's the fifteenth piece of paper in a packet where you have to put your address, and it, you know, it's, it should be the first piece of paper in that packet. Is this unnecessary? Are there any other questions about statewide testing or anything like that for the Acting Superintendent? Or that she can take back?
When, when we get that data?
Um, it should be released fairly soon. I don't have the exact date. They um, have started releasing it to um, superintendents um, and it will be released to the public in the near future.
Okay, and it said families can access, access that. Do we? Didn't he say something about families being able to access that for their own kids?
They are shareable.
Shareable. Wonder how we get that?
The data?
Yeah.
Once it, once it comes to the Superintendent, Superintendent, the boards becomes a public document, and then it's shareable. So, but.
I, I, yeah, my guess is that it's locked in the system here, and you could, like.
If you called and asked, you could.
Yeah, yeah. If you set, can I see, makes the kids score, still have it.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be easily accessible once it's like actually organized. But they're probably not gonna just send it to everyone, because some people are gonna go.
Yeah. Right.
So yeah, something that you wanna eat, okay, um. Additionally, there's a couple of openings in the school, pair educators, we can always need them, always looking. We are. I think having two pair educators missing is pretty good, all things considered. Alright, um, anything else for this Superintendent?
Yeah, I had, so where was it? Where am I? The comments on the committee. I don't know where I am in this packet, but um.
I have a discussion later on that.
Oh, is that?
That's, that, I, that is a, that's an agenda I don't, I would hope that you hold those comments until.
Well, it was about Mark's comments specifically in his report.
So I have a building. That wasn't in his report, that was in his, um, that was related to the air handlers.
Oh, oh, okay, gotcha. Just in a different report that he's on.
So that, that is, that is a separate document that we talked about there.
Okay.
And that document's in the packet, and that um. Specifically to the E R U.
Gotcha, he has a report for that, okay. Oh, I see it, yeah.
And so that is a discussion I have later in the meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, no more?
You know.
Moving on, Student Services. Now, this is weird. You haven't had the Student Services Director here at a, at a Dandle meeting in a while. So is there anything that you wanna tell us to start with beyond your report, since you're here? Since you're holding two hats?
We, we're just working really hard to find some related service and school psychologist position, so needing to go virtual is a big shift. So luckily here at Danville, there's not the need to, but in some other schools, we had to use virtual speech pathologists. Here, we will have to use virtual school psychologists to do educational evaluations, which is a shift for everyone, requires kind of more planning, more personnel, because somebody needs to be with the student during the testing. Um, so we're going to be getting used to that, um, and we're still. When I wrote this report, I thought we were fully staffed with that, but at, we still have one full-time opening for school psychologists.
Okay, so yeah, that's not on the, that, school psychologist.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we were all set.
And that person's virtual?
Virtual, yeah. I would love, uh, my preference absolutely would be to get somebody here in person. Um. We just had zero applicants.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult, isn't difficult to, this is the staff, the high pressure area.
And if you have any questions about the selective monitoring um, process, if you're happy to answer those, that is all based on um timelines of evaluations, so we have a plan in place. Um, to correct that. Ally Monahan, the Assistant Director, that's going to be her primary focus um, this year is compliance and really making sure that we stand on top of things. Doing some training.
Okay, other questions on the Student Services Report? Okay, hearing none? Alright, so I'll move on to the Principals Report, and we have Sarah online, Natalie here. And. I read through this, it looks like we have a lot, a lot of kids going through with sports, and we had some, you know, there's some adjustments, obviously, with some kids. From neighboring towns in our sports department, our sports programs as well.
Yeah.
And we have quite a bit of new staff, and I wonder if.
I was just gonna say, those numbers are only the Danville kids, though.
Right, sixty-two percent of our, of our kids are um, enrolled in sports.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And two hundred, we have two hundred and thirty kids playing sports. That's a lot of kids.
I just wanted to. I wanted to add to this, the free and reduced lunch form piece that you talked about. Um. Like you said, it's incredibly important. We have been on a waiver for the last three years, and at the end of this current school year, are no longer on a waiver, so the data that we collect um, from the forms in. In September, they have to be completed by the end of this month. Um, are vital to our title funding for next year. Um, so that impacts. Professional development that we can do, other training that we can do, as well as a couple of positions, so the more that we can get that out, um, and we'll do a big push. We did a really big push last year and still had a lot of missing ones, um, but we'll continue that. Um. And you, it, once it's returned, families won't see that. We'll narrow it down so that it's focused to families that we still need the responses from.
Alright, good. Okay, open house, it's September the twenty seventh. Volunteer stuff coming up for that. Anybody has any questions? We're hoping to meet. Tune in up on that one. Anybody have any questions for either of the Principals to start with? Hanging on, Jimmy Nolan yet? Uh. It's usually, I don't have that reaction when it's you know. My. Okay. So no questions there for the Principals. Okay. One of the things that was requested. In addition to the Principals' Report was a Facilities Report. And if you look through the Facilities Report, um. Quite a few things were happening. The roof inspection. Didn't look great, you know, the roof inspection is not in the packet, it's only online, it's in the online packet only. Um, it looks like we have some, some work to do on the roof again. Some maintenance to do, but we have some time set up aside for that. How are the new doors working, I guess? Are the new doors?
So far, sort of.
Or so good.
Had a couple that needed to be, they needed to come back and re-prepare, but they did not, so. I think the only door issues we have now are not the one set.
Not the new doors. Okay, and. Then there's a, there's a mention here, he's got a mention of the E R Us, but we'll get to that in just a minute. Um, what you do notice on the next page in the packet is um, what the lighting project ended up costing. And um, the lighting is all done. We have all new L E D lights. If you look up, you'll see that they replaced the panels with new panels and smaller lights and brighter lights, and. That's progress, and that's gonna save us some problems down the line trying to find bulbs. So I think that was money well spent. There are any questions? I did put a, a, an email back into Sean to ask him about replacing the signage out front that had been up last year. Via entry sign at one forty-eight, and the entry sign on the other side, he said there's a, um. He's got a bid coming, he couldn't get a guy to come out to give a bid. There've been a couple of people that asked about that, including the property owners on. Whose property that sits on. So tho- those signs are in a little bit of disrepair, and so we should have a quote soon on replacing those.
I think the other big thing from this is the buzz tag here, the new security, so we now have. Um, the lock when you come into the building, and those other double doors locked. During the day, so it's two, two entry points before you actually.
So the atrium's the atrium.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so the atrium's the entryway, and they come in, and then you can, they can reassess. It's, it's always been too far. For them to really see from their desks who it is and what's going on, so, and it's a necessary measure. The, they made a law to make it necessary, and so we're. We're compliant with the law. And that's good. Thank you for that. Okay. That is on the Facility Report. No questions on the Facility Report?
No, it'd be great if that was something that every year we could get. I don't know if that's.
Well, you said, I had somebody who said, why, we should have it every month, we should have it every couple of weeks, and so we're, we'll start talking to Sean about how often we can get a Facilities Report. As to what work was done. This is the, the first thing. This just catches everybody up on where we were since we haven't met in a while. So certainly at the beginning of the year, we need it.
I think, I think if we went back, there was a time we had specifically asked for that, but it was like pre-Shawn.
Yeah, I think, I, I think there was, there was definitely time in the middle between the old guy and the current guy, there was a middle guy and that guy.
And we were like, oh my gosh, this report's so good, could you do this every month? And they were like, no, but we could do it every other month.
Or even every six months.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Right, it's nice to have it all in one place.
Yeah, definitely.
Can, maybe we could follow up with Sean and figure out how feasible it is to do this quarterly? To get an idea of when something, something major happens. Hopefully, nothing major happens.
And, and also to see what's coming down the road, so to be like, oh, we, it'll be nice to see the fire marshals report. Oh, it'll be nice to, you know.
Yeah.
What, where is the update on the E R Us? Like, it'll, it's nice to see that coming at you, too.
And it's, it's an easy thing to point people to as well. It's an easy thing to point people to with regarding the facility, right? Okay. Now, Mike, are you here? Mike's got us muted.
Yep, I'm here, sorry.
So Mike, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you so that you can give us a brief update on our uh, F Y twenty-two audit statement and tell us what things that you think are noteworthy before anybody asks, see if anybody has any questions? Got okay with you, or are you just here to answer questions?
Well, I, I thought, I thought we covered uh, was it the last board meeting? Fiscal twenty-two audit results. If we did not, then we can, we'll definitely cover it. I thought today was uh, fiscal twenty-three preliminary financial results.
I've got new, I got board business, fiscal F Y twenty-two audited financial statement, and then I've got the preliminary F Y twenty-three financials both. So did we, in June, did we cover that?
I don't think so.
I don't, I think you might be. There's a lot, you got a lot of districts.
Yep, you're probably right. Okay, um, and I thought it might have been in August, but you're probably right, so. Um, okay, so let's talk about the fiscal twenty-two audit.
Um, this is only online because it was fifty pages long, so if Mike can have the capacity to share his screen, that would be helpful.
Yep. We sure will. I think what's most important is there was hopefully a three-page. Executive summary that was provided with the fifty-page beast, right? Did every, first, let's start with that. Did everybody get the executive summary version of three pages?
It is in the.
It's um, dated April twelfth. Hey, I'll pull it up on the screen. That way you guys can hopefully recognize it.
Don't have it online anymore.
Everybody's. See this document.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so this can save you. Um, I don't know, hours of, of reading. Uh, into the numbers. I think what's important here is these guys have to, all auditing firms have to provide us with. Their, their executive summary of what the audit entailed, what they did. Right, and talk about, you know. Was there anything unusual? Did we not do our jobs, right? Were there any material misstatements or audit adjustments? Right, of, you know. Major corrections outside of like, the, they always help with, like Vista's retirement on behalf payments and pension and all that. Um, that's part of just what they do to help us, right? Because that's kind of like all the, the state level, and so we just have to put it on our books. Uh, just to reflect that, but that's not something that anybody in this off, in our office or at the S U kind of controls or even records, so the auditors do help with that one piece, but outside of that. You know, there are disagreements with management, the whole thing. I would recommend spending some time reading it. Um, but basically what this says is we got a, a clean bill of health. The one thing they did recommend, and I'll, I think it's on this last page here. Um, it said that we recommend to the management that the board specifically vote to approve the chosen tax anticipation note. Because the TAN is a contract to provide more than a million dollars to the district. For the year, in exchange for an interest rate, so we have to pay interest on it, right? Um, that, they're not explaining that we take that money and we invest it to kind of offset the interest expense, but that's okay. Uh, this is, I guess, what they have to do for Government Accounting Standards Board. Um. What they're saying is, in the future, you guys should vote on it, and I think you did this last year, so we took this feedback in the springtime. Um. To make sure going forward, we'll always vote on. Um, when I propose the TAN, after I've shopped around for the best rate. And the best service. Um, that you guys just simply vote that, yeah, we need the TAN until the tax money comes in from. The town clerk, from Wendy Summers, Treasure, right? If we didn't have that, we'd have a really hard time paying bills, so.
Um, right, two years ago, we didn't make a motion on that. We got the loan. This year, we did make a motion on that. We got the loan, but in the process of getting that loan, we found out that we had the other error, that we've stopped taking only care. So the TAN.
Right, but, but that, but that error didn't affect the needs of the TAN.
No, and not at all, but it was, but we did do it.
Yep.
As you recall.
Yep, no, understood. I'm just saying that, that, that's what this is about. This is about making sure you guys vote on having a TAN. Even though it's kind of counter, it's kind of counterintuitive, because you can't operate without one, but yeah, we'll vote on it.
Get that at the main meeting. Okay.
So, I mean, this is, this is where I would spend the time. Um, if anybody has any specific questions about. This executive summary, or this doesn't do it for you, and we wanna dive into the fifty-three pages um, that come with the audit report, we can do so.
I only have one question, I promise. Um, the net position decreasing, can you speak to that? Does that affect us at all, or what do we do with that?
So can you um, explain what exactly, what page we're looking at?
Um, under the finance. Financial highlights, it says the district's net position decreased by a hundred and eighty-seven. Um, or with three point four percent would be a better number.
Okay, what page are you looking at on this?
Page four. No, page four of the management discussion and analysis.
Yeah, page four, under financial highlights.
So you must be on the big. Oh, okay.
I'm in the packet, it was in the packet that we got, the, the full.
So the full fifty-three page document is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Just under, it's only the financial highlights, though, that first page, it's not getting in the weeds too much. Do you, do you have page four?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull it up, so it's, it's not part of the executive summary. Let me shut that down. Let's open up the official. Apple. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it went down, and I have the summary that I showed you guys. It's the same, it's the same results, but let's, let's um, page four. Right, I think they're talking about the net position of the unrestricted fund balance. So, yep, so let's, this is what I showed the school board last year, just be- before the audit was finalized. Um, it came in exactly what I showed, but we'll, we're gonna open it up so I can show you. Okay, so in twenty-two. Um. We had. Let's see here, in twenty-two. We had revenues were up because food service, uh, we overassessed food service, and then the Medicaid sub-grant. Was um, not planned for, but was a good guy. So our revenues were up sixty-eight thousand. We had to transfer. A lot of money to the capital fund. Because we did some great things that were not budgeted for. Um, as you can see here, let me blow this up. So. So we did, let's see here. We had the biomass fuel boiler and delivery system. We had uh, some yurt materials we bought, security updates for cameras and doors. Uh, elevator lift upgrades and some floor restoration. So when we did that, we obviously. Um. Spent more than we budgeted for, but that's all because it was all board-approved, necessary items. So the unrestricted fund balance. Went down. And I believe that's what the net difference is, but let's just see what, if that's true. It might be more than that in this example, though, so I don't know what the one eighty-seven is. So that was a net. Position of three forty-five. Going down.
As I recall, like, in the, in the original planning, we had, we had anticipated that we would have more tuition students last year, and we had a few, a couple fewer.
Okay.
And that was um.
Well, we're, we're, we're talking about twenty-two right now, right?
I'm also talking about twenty-two.
Yep, okay, so that's.
More revenue from tuition, and we didn't have that.
And we don't need to, I was more wondering, what do we do with that? Do we make that up in the upcoming year, or what are we, not necessarily getting into the weeds too much with it, but more, how does that impact us going forward? Do we make up that? Amount somewhere else?
Well, that's our spare money.
We just put that. Oh, you're saying that's a.
That's our unrestricted capital reserve, but that is our position, is our unrestricted capital reserve. It's not how much our operating money, how much we have left over at the end that we're allowed to keep. And so what you're gonna see next year is something similar, because as you'll see in the F Y twenty-two there, that's been audited. We also have, we're sitting on a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's gonna be gone next year.
Right, okay, so that makes sense.
Education reserve. So that's just the leftover money that we hold in reserve for emergencies. And in that example, again, we spent, we spent some of our leftover money last year on biomass and on, on new bleachers and on um. The, I guess, quite a bit on the yurt. It wasn't connected to the yurt. But it's not.
So it's only the reserve funds?
It's only, it's only the, the.
That was, that was.
Think of it like retained earnings. It's like retained earnings in a couple, right? So you can decide what you want to do with it. If, if we, if we were private, we could pay dividends to shareholders, I, I mean, to owners. If we were public, we could pay dividends to shareholders, so. What, what we're saying is, we had this to, to, you know, to Clayton's point. We, we exceeded revenues, we overspent on expenses, but the reason why is, was almost all of it was capital expenditures on major items. That's, that's twenty-two's position. We still ended the year with five sixteen and unrestricted. Twenty-seven for, in the capital fund. Uh, forty-five for the mission and reserve, and one eighty for special ed, which. To Clayton's point, we're using this, almost the entire thing. Uh, for the budget of twenty-four, which we're in now.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. And then we can, when, when we're done with twenty-two, we can talk about how we ended in twenty-three.
Okay, so are we ready to be done with twenty-two? That's the audit. Other than that one motion that we didn't make, um, there was nothing, and so then he's going to talk us through also the preliminary F Y twenty-three financials that are not yet audited.
Correct. So, so real quick, when you say the motion that.
Mike, it's not, Mike, this is not in the virtual packet or the other packet, so this, this got added late. Um, Katie didn't get any documentation in to us. So I don't know when this got added to the agenda, because.
Yep, so I just had a question on, on what you just said. Sorry, Clayton. You said something about, yeah, you said something just a few minutes ago about. On something we didn't vote on. And, and misunderstood.
The TAN.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The one note from that twenty-two audit was that we needed a TAN vote. And subsequently made that correction.
Correct, we actually made it before the audit report was, was sent out, that's right.
Alright, so closing that one, F Y twenty-three financials preliminary, I just wasn't on the agenda when, and on Friday. I, I don't know when this was added, so do you have something you can show us?
Yes, can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so there's twenty-three. Um, so in twenty-three, we had a revenue miss unlike the previous year. And it's because. Um. We overestimated, um, six fewer students did not return. Uh, so either did not return, or the incoming freshman class wasn't as big as we thought. So, but the good news is, instead of being like a hundred and twenty thousand dollar miss. It's actually only seventy-three, because. We had another good guy that we weren't counting on, and that was the Medicaid sub-grant, which Anne and Mark and I all talked through, and. We distributed some leftover Medicaid funds. Uh, back to the school districts, so. You know, one twenty was offset by that, uh, just call it fifty thousand dollar Medicaid sub-grant. On the expense side. Um, it looks like we, we ran a deficit, but it's not from operations. Again, it had to do with significant capital expenditures. I think. Clayton just alluded to some of it, but did a lot of stuff on the athletic front, uh, bleachers, paint in the gym, batting cage. Then there was a huge lighting project, which uh. Cost about sixty-seven. And then we had additional yurt. Like work that needed to be done, excavation work for the footings. And then we put an elevator lift. In, I guess, or more repairs towards something similar from the previous year, so. Um, the, the, the point is, there's some work done, and that is the reason why we went over. So that is dropping the unrestricted surplus down. To three fifty-four. That's where I think we're gonna land. The other reserves. For the mission and, and vision, and the, and then the um, capital fund, those remain unchanged. The one eighty. I know it's here at the end of twenty-three, but it's gonna be consumed in twenty-four, so um, it's already built into the budget. So this is preliminary results. I just wanted to show you guys early, and on another more meeting, maybe in October. Uh, we can go. Major line item by line item, if the board feels it's necessary.
So most of this we've talked about, and these numbers have been presented to us in various ways. We knew the hundred and eighty thousand was gonna go away. We knew with the lighting project that we were gonna drop to about three fifty in our unrestricted reserve. Um, the only part we didn't know was that we were gonna lose more students, and that's just gonna be an ongoing concern. Is that we have to figure out how to get students to come to this high school, as, as the ones. Is that we have to figure out how to get students to come to this high school, as, as the ones that live here leave, if they leave, and try to keep the ones that can. And this is just simply a problem that we have. Anybody have any questions for Mike? No questions, Mike. Okay, do you have anything else to tell us?
No, I, I'll be starting the budget process a little earlier this year, so I'll be working with Natalie and Sarah and the teams. Um, I gotta start with the ESU first, and then we'll work our way through the districts like we always do. That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
See you later. Okay, so that is the reality of that. Now moving on, um, we had requested as, from the building committee, as part of the building committee, we, we've been trying to work our way around a, a couple of problems, trying to work our way around, trying to solve some problems. And one of the things that we thought that we were gonna be able to do was a one-for-one trade-out of the, um, ERU units on the top of the building, and we asked Sean to get a quote on it. Sean's quote on it was a quote, but it wasn't an engineered quote, and we're running into the same problem that we ran into all over the place, which is this building can't have things swapped out on it without, um, causing the next problem down the line, and uh, superintendent looked at that, put some work into trying to figure out how to get it, um, worked on, and it needs to be engineered. That si- situation would need to be engineered for it to happen, and on August the twenty-fourth, he sent us a letter. And so the letter went to the board, the letter went to the principals, and that's where we are. So everybody read the letter. The letter's part of the documents, there is, um, engineering work that's gonna have to be done before we can make a replacement with ERU. So that's simple solution that we thought we could get somewhere as the building committee, and we thought that we could pursue that down the line. Doesn't seem, um, feasible right off the bat without a lot of extra work, but it's still our pressing need. Inside this building is the movement of air, and so he's gonna come back to us later when he gets back, um, going to see if he can find out from an engineer how this works. And he sent us this letter, and I believe he has something to say.
Yeah, the comment about the committee was on the second page. Um, I just wanted to clarify that I think it was at our May, May meeting, or sometime in the spring, we decided that the committee was going to discuss space, and the board was gonna talk about facility issues. So I felt like that was an inaccurate statement to place that on the committee, because we as a board are essentially responsible, and I think that we were the one that had him get that bid, and it wasn't the committee.
Right, the board, the board asked for that, right, the committee, um, and I think the word that was, that really, that you mostly didn't like was scattershot.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you're looking at a seventy-five million dollar new school, it's going to be scattershot when you're trying to find solutions, and I think, you know, the committee is coming to the table and sharing ideas, and I think I appreciate that they're there to support us, and, um, they're doing the best they can with what they have, and it's a hard problem that we're all trying to solve together. That's what I wanted to say.
And I think it's okay for them to be like, here's a direction, go for it, and I think it's okay that we went a direction.
Yeah.
Find out, because I think that starting number is important. So we saw a, a starting number, and we were like, whoa, that's a big number, and now we're like, wow, that's gonna be an even bigger number, because here's the other factors that are impacted.
Right.
Um, and so, yeah, I, I felt similarly about that.
Okay. You know, and we didn't know, and we were like, yeah, let's get a bid for ventilation and the lighting. We didn't know we were gonna go down this rabbit hole of needing to do engineering and all the costs that go on top of that, so it's, yeah, I think, um, we're all gonna figure it out as we go, and it's a hard problem to solve, so.
And I think we always just need to anticipate there'll be problems, because the, and the lighting project that we did the right way, they're like, oh, look what we found.
Right, we have a million more dollars. So I think, yeah, it's, it's, I like the idea of having a general contractor, though, to kind of, for the work the board's gonna do to fix the building. Having somebody to manage all that will be important, and I think that's a, a good recommendation that he gave there.
All right, I would agree. Um, like I said, maybe peace feels a better word there, maybe, you know, one-off.
I've never heard the word scattershot, so that was a new one for me, but it triggered me a little bit, just to defend the committee and what the work that they're doing.
It's a particular loading of, it's an ammunition.
Yeah.
Based word.
And the, the quote from the committee member, um, I, I don't remember that, but anyway, but yeah.
I mean, that, that is, I did, this, that is probably, um, something that is apocryphal. That is probably a, a manifestation of something that, this is, why are you doing this, Sean? And Sean says, because somebody in the committee asked me to do this, and more specifically, the board asked me to do it.
Right, yeah.
And if we asked them to do that in that room, as, as the committee, not he, meaning that I've understood we have a board that was asking to do that. But it was the board that asked me.
And asked, we asked Mark to do it, so Mark in that meeting said he would, and there were any complaints at that time.
Okay, so he says he plans to have a clearer approach for us to consider. I would like to think he did. But it's like, most of them might. Okay, so are there no further questions on that one? The next one is a building advisory committee update, and this is just probably briefly for Molly, because I think they're still collating data.
Yeah, so I can share that we got a hundred and eighty-seven online responses, which is great. Um, it's about ten percent of our voters, which is a good, good number to have. Um, I did pick up the paper copies at the town hall today, and we have like fourteen paper submissions, so we have even more than a hundred and eighty-seven. So we're gonna, Katie White and I, um, and Mary Beatty and Rob Balavie worked over the summer to do that survey, and Melissa too was on the committee. And, um, and Katie and I are gonna go through, and, you know, Google Forms has certain uh, tables and graphs that they offer, but we're gonna just try to pull some more relevant charts that we think people will be interested in seeing, and share that at a committee meeting, I'm assuming, instead of a board meeting. I don't know what you all think about that, if we should share it there.
I think if you shared a committee meeting as a board meeting, so.
Yeah.
The information, so we'll be setting a committee meeting at some point.
And hopefully we can get that, get that information out, and it'll be public, and we'll figure out a way to present it, so it's clear.
Right, it's clear, it's clear anonymity can be kept, where anonymity is to be kept, and all that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So we're, we'll expect that at a future meeting, and we will plan that future meeting down, we're planning future meetings. Try, try to get the committee meeting back on schedule.
What do we, I wanna, are we gonna send an email after that group to see about scheduling a meeting? What do you think we should do about that?
I think the quorum is us, and we should set a meeting, and if people can come, people can come. It's too, it's too hard to ask people when are they available, because not everybody's ever available.
Right, that sounds good.
That's what they set a meeting, no?
Did we?
Well, it says here that October fourth at seven.
Oh.
No, no, that is, that's not that meeting, that's the next meeting, that's the town, that's the one I'm gonna tell you about in a minute. That's like, that's a committee you guys didn't even know about yet, that you're not having to be on. That's the town meeting committee.
No, this says determine the next slash regular meetings. Everyone has a pretty big schedule, but the group, and this is in the.
The, in it, right, in the packet, you were looking at the minutes of this different meeting.
This is the different meeting, this is the.
That's the town meeting.
I haven't even pulled you out of this one yet, okay.
I'm with you now.
Okay, so we will set the meeting at the building committee.
All right. If we do October, I think, I mean, is that too late? Right.
Okay. So no additional questions then on the town meeting committee? No, that's not on the building advisory committee, because if not, I will tell you about the town meeting committee.
Let's do that.
Okay, so for all of you in May, I said, town wants to have a town meeting committee, and they're meeting school board members. And all of you politely decline, and so I am on the town meeting committee. As, as, as the representative from the school board. And the only good news is I'm not the chair of that, um, and we are meeting at the town meeting committee to discuss what to do with town meeting, because town meeting was so sparsely attended, and the few people that were there were so vehement about their own personal democracy, and everybody else's democracy didn't matter as much, because they weren't there. And so it was about, uh, uh, my goal in it was to be about increased participation, but there are other goals about letting people make motions to change budgets. And let, which is not legal in school budgets, but letting people make motions to change appropriations from the board. Right, so there's gonna be, it's, it's gonna go slowly, we're gonna meet often, I have homework for that, the minutes are here. It's a seven-person committee, the public is welcome, we'll take in the members, um. If you'd like to come, there's two select board members, one school board member, um, Tom Sabroski's on it, Allison Desbathy's on it, and one other guy whose name I can't remember is on it, he's a civic student. He's gonna reach out, this is where I told you, he's gonna reach out to you.
Yeah.
He did. So the reason he reached out to you is his relevance to school, that he thought this might be an, a, a capstone project for a kid here in the school to join this committee, to keep track of the committee, to maybe gather some data, and it might be a good pathway to a senior project. And so he reached out, and then, all right, I forgot his name. Yeah, he had, he had a name, and he had a beard. So it was a man with a name and a beard.
Yeah.
And he is on the committee, so if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them. And, um, that meeting's on October the fourth, so I'm unavailable for whatever meeting you want to schedule. And that's that, that's my update, and I'm gonna have to give you routine updates on that, because that's part of my assignment, is to give the school board routine updates on the town meeting. Okay, next, we have received several, uh, communications from the superintendent, more as public than as board about, um, the changes to the athletic director position, and then a couple of them as board members as well, because we don't actually, we don't specifically have, um, he, he's not in our purview, the athletic director job to approve it. It's unapproved with the operations of it, but I have asked Randy to be here to answer any questions anybody has about the structure of the, um, the athletic director position now, because it has changed so drastically, and I would, before we start, I will let you know about the, it's, and this was in one of our memos about the payment. All of what happened, happened too late to change. Moving Randy's position, we got moved to a CCSU position, but he's still, it's really still a Danville position in terms of payment. And the assistant is paid by Cabot Twin. The assistant, who is actually an interim.
Correct.
An interim assistant athletic director, um, a man I've met, but I haven't seen. Also with a beard, right, Sarah? Beard, beard on that guy, beard on that guy, and, um, he's the interim assistant athletic director, and he is currently being paid by Cabot Twinfield, so this is the, officially, they're not CCSU positions. But unofficially, they're CCSU positions, and the reason for that is because there's so much intermingling of sports.
And so when we look at our next budget, is it likely it will be proposed that these become CCSU positions if we're now? I mean, I, I, I don't think that's a, an illogical move, if Randy is overseeing three schools, that's, that's a CCSU job.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And so while we recognize that we can't make that shift now, I do think that's something we wanna keep on the radar when it comes to budgeting for, in the future.
That is a question that I will be asking in two Mondays to the CCSU board as well. Um, because I don't know the answer to that, and Mark, as yet, wasn't sure. It wasn't, it's not a legal requirement to move the athletic director positions upward, but given the, the scope of the work, I think that it's, it, it makes logical sense that that should be a CCSU position, and so Randy's here to make sure to let us know that he's handling Danville.
One, and it's Mark, on Mark's radar, because he says there are, there will be a separate discussion about whether these will move, so.
That would be CCSU.
That would be after CCSU.
How it's all broken up going forward in the finances, or?
Uh, one of the things that, I, I, I think I wanna ask Randy questions, if you're here, Randy, thanks for coming, by the way. Do you have an idea of how many, um, kids you're dealing with on Danville teams that are from other towns that are Twinfield and Cabot, and that also aren't Twinfield Cabot? You and I had a discussion Saturday morning, that a lot of the kids we deal with don't even come from Twinfield Cabot.
Correct.
They're from other neighborhoods.
Correct, so especially in the kindergarten through eighth grade. Teams, we have traditionally, to start it before I was here, we've always hosted Peacham, Walden, some Barnett kids on our youth teams, especially because they don't offer those programs in that host communities. Um, and then I would say the Twinfield Cabot kids that we're hosting. Um, we are hosting approximately four Twinfield Cabot middle school girls. We are hosting approximately six, uh, Twinfield Cabot middle school boys. We are hosting approximately seven varsity girls soccer players from Twinfield and or Cabot. Um, and then our boys varsity soccer teams are separate for now. Uh, Marcus pointed this in the direction that those will be teams that are combined next year.
For soccer?
Yes.
Can you, for me, give me some sort of the depth of the issue at the Twinfield School in terms of facilities for children to play?
For sure, they, in the Marshfield, Plainfield and Cabot communities, they don't have a playable field in any of those communities right now.
Not a varsity field, not a junior high field, nothing, right, Mike?
Right, so, so, uh, my assistant and I went to Twinfield, um, last week to do the best we could for a practice field for their boys varsity team, um, and we got just short of a half of a, a regulation soccer field on their flooded area, uh, at, in, at their school, at the Twinfield School. Um, and that's the only playable surface that they have in any other communities. So they don't have a choice. I mean, part of this was probably coming anyway, the, the, kind of the joint.
At the top level.
Right, for just numbers needs, but then this kind of backed us into a corner where they don't have fields to play on. And we're lucky here that we're not in the flood zone, and we have great fields.
And so because we are lucky, we're being gracious. Because we are lucky, we're being good neighbors, and because we are lucky, we're taking their kids.
Yes, that's part of it. Part of it is, is just a numbers driven thing. I mean, when we started these discussions three years ago, they didn't have enough players for a baseball team. We needed players to field the baseball team. Softball, that switched. We didn't have enough to field their own softball team. They were short on numbers for their softball team, so it only made sense. Um, and then girl soccer, they had seven players, we needed some players. It's worked out. Middle school soccer, they probably could have fielded a co-ed team presumably, but they don't have anywhere to, to practice.
Do you, do you think that combining, this may be for CCSU, but combining your salary with the assistant director and then dividing by three could be a model? I'm just, I'm concerned about Danville shouldering the burden, not necessarily with Twinfield and Cabot, but as a region, if we have the infrastructure and our taxpayers are paying for the infrastructure, I, I think this is great, that our kids are getting the opportunity. It's not about that at all. I, I wanna see that happen, but thinking about what we offer here with our fields and just going forward, take this year out of it, um, are we gonna end up shouldering that burden for a lot of the towns in our area, like you said, like Peacham, Barnett, and now Twinfield Cabot? I guess just to have on your radar going forward with that, that's just a concern that I have, that it's, if we have the infrastructure, it may naturally fall to us, and is that more of a community rec program than it is a Danville school program?
I think more of the burden's gonna fall on Danville's shoulders, because we host kindergarten through twelfth grade athletic programs, uh, within our school budget.
Yeah.
Twinfield and Cabot do not. They, they're a community-based kindergarten through sixth grade.
Oh, they're a rec?
Yes, they're a rec.
So parents, parents pay to participate?
Right.
And then nobody pays to participate in our program from other towns, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
So when, so when Peacham kids come here to play, Walden kids come here to play, Barnett kids come here to play, we don't, we don't see any financial benefit. We don't get any money back for that.
But if it becomes a CCSU position, there is the capacity and already the foreknowledge on how to build back for individual things like that, and it's possible that a formula could be created based on participation that would make it more equitable for Danville to participate. I mean, you, you know, in, in, in the case of this year, if we didn't allow other kids from other towns, we'd lose a good coach, too. There's a lot, there's a lot of things, we, we lose, we lose a very, a very popular coach and a very popular couple of players, but in terms of money, um, we're, we're happy to field teams, but it would be nice to share the load more.
Yeah.
And in, in the, in the models that they have, you can build back at that level, and so that's one of the things that when we bring this up at the CCSU level, and for those of you in Danville, I would encourage you to come and say, we're happy to participate, we're happy to be helpful, but we don't need to shoulder the burden. Maybe there's a way to, to build this back in some way, uh, from the athletic front, that might be more work for you.
I asked Mark that question.
I, I would too.
The cost to be shoulder between the three schools.
Just the three, not the, but not.
Yeah, I think, I, I think if we can.
Well, I mean, I think we also, we need to be careful what we're asking for, too. I think what we have here right now is really awesome, and it works really well for Danville. Um, because it's also possible, if we become a CCSU team, then now we're something else.
Right.
So now we're not bears, and we're not whoever, I, I don't know. But you know what I'm saying, it's like, because, I mean, at this point, you know, I assume when we send kids there to play, they become they're, that team, and when kids come here, we become bears, and then you have to then determine how important is that to us.
Yeah.
Which I think depends on who you ask in the community. So I, I think, um, I think everything that's happening is amazing. I do think we need to look at financially what makes sense, but I think it's gonna lead to that philosophical question then of who are these teams? If a team is made up from kids from five communities.
Right, right, it's a regional.
And maybe nobody will care. Maybe the kids are like, we don't care, we're playing.
We'll be there.
But, but I think it, it, it's probably gonna become a discussion.
Yeah.
It already has. I, I think when Natalie and I, the Cabot and Twinfield administrators and Sarah sat down with Mark, uh, via Zoom in August, we discussed that going forward. You know, at what point do we? You know, at what point do we? The teams that were combining, which won't always be all of it, won't be all of the teams. But at what point do we switch over to a CCSU? Some mascot, or, or um, one example I like to use is that Northfield and Williamstown. They do a lot of this and, and they, they kind of are working under the same model we're heading towards. When they combine teams. They're called Payne Mountain, and they have a shield that has a, both their mascots on that shield. The BPA has set a line in the sand of if, if there's four or less, so if four Twinfield Cabot students come to play on a Danville team, then we're still Danville. If it's five or more, then that's when we're a cooperative team.
Okay.
So right now, we're a cooperative team in girl soccer.
For varsity.
But we don't really have uh. You know, it's, I'm trying to refer to it as much as I can as the CCSU soccer team.
Yeah.
Um, that's not a great long-term answer, and we're aware of that.
Right.
We're aware that that's not a great long-term answer, and we decided during that meeting that we would. Like to meet again soon and discuss how we can best move forward to, to make buy-in from. All community, make everybody feel welcome, but also keep our own identities when we can.
Right.
Have to buy uniforms all the time.
And the uni, yeah, uniforms and coaches, all the costs for that too. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, you know, if we think about. Kids leaving sports typically in middle school, and it seems like we've had a decline in high school with some of the sports that. My only concern is if we have these larger teams, like my experience with my two kids is we've had very large teams and you see kids drop off. Because they're not getting a lot of playing time, so again, this isn't, this is more of a parent hat on than, but uh, I, I just want. Just to ke- keep that in mind that um the size of the teams, I think, does matter, that when we're, I want the Danville students to still have that opportunity to play and. We don't want them to leave in high school, we don't want them to leave in eighth grade, so just something to keep in mind.
So at the middle school level, so the, middle school and high school, so at the middle school level, we could eventually transition to have a seventh grade soccer. Team and an eighth grade.
Yeah, that would be great.
Soccer team.
Yeah.
I know with the numbers we have right now, twenty, that's a tricky number when you need eleven to play in a game, so that's twenty is a tricky, tricky number. At the high school level. If we have overflow numbers, so right now the girls have twenty-two, I've started to schedule a few, the varsity girl soccer team has about twenty-two. I've started to schedule a few JV games, so that we're making sure that we get those players that are younger or less experienced, some game. Playing time.
Yeah.
Cause they're probably not gonna get that. So when we do, when we have a lot of, of girls or a lot of players, then we will try to schedule, or we could have a JV. Coach, you know, and we could have separate the two teams completely.
Yeah.
Into a JV, and then kids are playing at the appropriate level.
Right.
But there are tricky numbers such as twenty. Twenty girl soccer, middle school soccer players, or twenty-two varsity girls soccer players is tough. Numbers just split into two to make two separate teams.
Yeah, thanks Randy.
Yeah, good on that. Stick around, cause I got two more things. Well, you got one for me, actually. The next one is you got one for me, and that's a seventy fund request.
Sure.
Uh, Randy asked that I have a seventy fund request put on the agenda. This one is, um, it might have come late. It'll come in, here it is, on the very back page of our packet. Um, before we start, uh, the seventy funds, as again, as again, has been discussed, is a lot of the money. This is the same thing with things being inflated and costs being inflated, as always. How much money you have is changes by how much things cost, and so what we're looking at here, the scope of this work just for the maintenance of the field is seven thousand dollars. Um, it's hedge trimming and um on the two fields.
We're only asking for half of that, we're only asking for the soccer field piece of that, so that should be about thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Thirty-eight fifty for the soccer field, you don't need the baseball field just yet?
We do not, we are hoping to get on a track where we do um them every other year, so baseball field one year, soccer field next, and continue on that track.
Okay, so um, this is an action item, I'm looking for, I'm, I'm, I'm looking to consider approval on this action item. Regarding um the scope of the work here, cedar hedge trimming on the sides and the top for the varsity soccer field at the town athletic complex. See, any questions about that?
Well, that's just that this is quote number two, do we know where the other quote fell?
You get two?
So uh, so this, that quote that you're looking at now. We got that quote, I don't know, approximately a year ago, and they did the baseball field hedges. So this is just, I think he just sent another.
Quote number two, it's, it's a year later. Two years later.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
And you've worked with these people before, Precision Property Management?
Uh, yeah, well, this was Jack Boferan, um, but now Matt Colburn.
I'll say.
Was I wrong? This is Matt Colburn who worked with Jack last year. Um, at his lawn care business, but also trimmed the hedges with Jack.
I know Matt, he's good.
I gotta write.
They're, they're both great.
Yeah.
So either one.
Either one you got.
So I'd be looking for a motion for thirty-eight fifty for the varsity soccer field maintenance.
The motion to approve the thirty-eight fifty for soccer field maintenance, seventy-five.
On seventy-five, Melissa, all right, seconds here, any discussion?
No, I, I, I did read my, that's the, that's the, sorry, um, last week about seventy-five specifically. After this ask, we're gonna ask for no more until March, until we have a better idea of what the market's going to do. Like to see the reserve be a little bit higher.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, this is. About the same, that's that, that's what we thought, that's what we were told actually, one of, at one of our meetings.
Okay.
Recently, and we, we're sort of the same deal, so thirty-eight fifty, motion on the table, second, any further questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of thirty-eight fifty from the seventy fund for uh varsity soccer field maintenance. Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion cares, thank you very much. Okay, and with that big downer, I have a parent here, got a question for us. Hi Jared, thank you for coming.
My parent, please.
Please, get the floor, sir.
Um, my name's Jared White, I'm a community member. Um, and I'm here looking to start the conversation on um adding a batting cage to the Little League field up by the playground. Um, I don't know where to start, uh, so I figured this was the place to do it. Obviously, dollars involved, time inside and making a change to what the physical appearance looks like up there. So I was looking to just start kinda, I guess, kinda question you guys, is to, is that the easiest place to start is? Can we do it? And then obviously the dollars come into play, um, if it's a. If it's a volunteer put up and completely funded through the Little League or uh volunteer dollars. Is that an easier approval process than looking for help from the seventy fund, like you guys were just talking? And kinda where do I steer that ship as far as putting that together um with permission to add that to the baseball field?
So I spoke to you on Saturday, and it seemed like a good idea, I spoke to Randy on Saturday, it's happened, it's not long after, he said that, that. Probably, that is something that is gonna be, is, is the Little League a five oh one C three? Where the Little League can take donations?
I think so.
Yeah, cause it literally is a five oh one C three, that's an easy way to take tax deductible donation. And so quite a bit of this is gonna have to be done via um, don't, don't, don't donations. And then there's some other ways to do it, and like I say, the seventy funds about to go pretty much on lockdown.
Yeah.
In terms of maintenance, because the money's just not stretching as far as it has to be, so that might not be. The best way to do it. In terms of permissions, um, this is gonna be something with building administrators, with the superintendent and with the athletic director. On appearance, and then um we could do some other fundraising, if, if you wanna get involved in that, get involved, you know, maybe pick stuff off the ground if need, if need be. But we gotta start with how much it's gonna cost.
Yep.
And then.
If, if it's the Little League that is fully funding it or donation funding, um, and does the cost come into play for you guys if, if we are. Funding that aspect of it?
Exactly, it, it doesn't come out of the school budget, it doesn't come out, it doesn't come to us, it only comes to the building operations.
Yeah.
For how you're gonna change physically the way the building works, permission and permission from administration straight down, but in terms of board approval, you wouldn't need it.
Yep. Um, so I'm looking kinda to price it two ways, um, with Randy's permission, if we have the old batting cage from the gym. Um, that's up in the white building, no longer in use, cause we have the new one down there.
Okay.
Um, so kinda retrofitting that net to work um with a, with a system that we put in place to hold those cables up to have a batting cage. Uh, with less expense, and then looking at what a new one would be similar to like they have at the high school um complex down at the town complex. Just kinda see whether it's a reality, how much that cost is, and I don't know if you guys maybe have some of that information for when that went up.
The one down at Town Field.
Um, but then I kinda bring both of those options back to the table. And again, for me, that kinda question is, can it be, can permission be granted to kinda make that change? Before I gather all of the pricing, or do you need all the pricing before you're willing to? Um, talk about adding that to the complex, if that makes sense.
Well, so I, for, for my part in this, which is one fifth of one fourth of one whatever. As I support Little League kids playing sports, um, and I think a bad engage makes a lot of sense, so I. I certainly have no, I have no issue with it personally, as long as it doesn't drastically change how they do a recess.
Yeah.
You know, that'd be the only thing, it's how, how they do recess, and I don't have any, any, any complaints about it, and I would defer to Randy on. Whether or not it's um, it's an okay thing, because I don't know the answer. Anybody, other board members?
I would just echo, we wanna support. Youth and sports, I mean, we're talking about having trouble fielding teams, so we got something that's gonna help. I would personally support it.
And so would you feel comfortable working with Randy, to use Randy as your contact to the administration, Randy, would you be okay with that?
That's fine.
In your new expanded duties to.
Something else to work.
Yeah.
And I guess the follow-up would be, is there any other permission needed from the building level administrators?
I don't know the answer about, do you have any idea the answer to that? She's got the thumbs up, but. How often have you used those thumbs? Are, are, are you just using those thumbs every day? Because.
Yeah, Jared, I think it's great, I think we just need to figure out where to put it so kids aren't climbing on it at recess.
It's my, uh, I was thinking it's kinda over by the volleyball courts.
That's what I figured.
Um, it still leaves volleyball net for those that wanna play volleyball, and obviously it can come down. At the end of the season, but I figured that placement keeps it away from the playground.
Yep.
Makes it easier to have to maintain keeping kids off it and. Uh, was kinda was my thoughts, but again.
No, I think I. I think the funding, we can talk about, obviously it can't come from the seventy fund right now, it can't come from the school budget right now, but we can discuss a little, I don't know what. We, we discussed, we don't know what Little League has to offer for funding, and, and if we have to fundraise something, we will do that, and then. I guess I would have checked with, with Natalie and Sarah, um, and then I will reach out to Guy and Steve to. Ask how often they use those volleyball courts up there.
Location.
Yeah, for, for location, and maybe if we could use uh, one of those courts and turn it into a batting gauge area.
Do we have space to store it in the winter? It comes in the winter, the yard.
What, so is it, would it be mobile enough that it could move down to the? Town baseball field during the winter and just be set down there? I don't know, that might be a goal, might be a goal to make it be mobile enough to move.
Yeah, depending on the setup, like if it's the pole, then my, what I see would be stationary, and depending on which setup those. Six posts would be set in stone up there, be it in concrete or however they set those poles. If it was a setup similar to what the um athletic complex has down below, those poles obviously have to have a place to go, um. But the net, yes, we have, the Little League has room to store the net, as far as poles go, I would have to get creative on.
Sure.
That portion.
But they're probably pretty sturdy, right? I mean, they, they probably.
There are, we have, we have them down there, yeah. We hang them on the walls of the back of the dugouts.
All right, um, so you may have to do some fundraising, and if it comes down to fundraising, feel free to knock on my door.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Jared.
Anybody else? Any other questions? That gets me through Randy, that gets you to everybody. Um, I have student representative recruiting. I talked to Natalie about, about this, we have one student rep who is, didn't have a report tonight because it was summer. And she just got back and she's just coming back in, and she doesn't yet have a mentor to remind her to do this uh among board members. And so.
Is that you?
I was with Thomas, like I took her in last time.
So you're well trained.
So if somebody, if, 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 if some, if another board member wants to um mentor Kaylee in the short term. They can, and if they don't, just say, just don't say anything, and I'll just know I'm stuck with it. And I'll um get in touch with Kaylee through you, and we'll start walking through the process of how to put together reports, if that's fine.
Find one or two more.
And so as, as part of our new policy, we can extend it out lower, and I, I thought we got all the way down to work to be a ninth grader.
I hope, have to look back, I can't remember.
That's that, when you sent me, cause I had sent it out to middle school and high school, and then Sarah said, ooh, I think it's an actual like board policy, so let's get that and. It's, you have to be in high school for at least a year, so it could be a sophomore.
Yeah.
Or.
That sounds right.
So not a freshman.
Thought I could be a freshman. So, can, Molly, can you look that up and find out if it could be a freshman in your, in your. In your, in your. Find out if, cause I asked Katie Callan to send me the um most updated one. And one second later I had something, and whether it was the most updated one or not, she was done with me, which I, I, I can certainly agree, that's a good thing for everybody. Uh, so, but I got what I thought was the updated one I sent to you, and I thought it could be freshman, cause there's a guy that does nothing, freshman class that needs work. That guy, that guy really needs. That's what I'm saying, that guy's a problem. So, where are we on now?
If he get a mentor.
So in the short term, we um, and Kaylee is a junior, correct?
Yeah.
So Kaylee's a junior, and she just, she's not, she didn't need a lot of guidance, and so we're probably gonna have to schedule some meetings here pretty soon. And that's where we are right now with student representatives, we're looking for a second one, maybe a third one out of who's here.
Great.
And it'll probably be an ongoing process because it doesn't seem super fun.
Um, but we're pretty fun.
I don't know, man.
Maybe we need a candy dish.
Yeah, there you go.
Don't be the bear.
I show up for food.
Okay. That's it for my agenda, and I've gotta schedule a couple meetings, but first I would ask for public input.
I have a list of questions.
Yeah, so I have a member of the public, uh Jenny, you have three minutes traditionally. Um, as you'll read down here, stakeholders can ask things, this is not a Q and A, but you can certainly ask those.
I can ask the questions and you can decide which ones you wanna answer.
Fair enough.
All right. So back to a comment you had made earlier, we're losing students, we don't know why, I talked to these five of the families of the fourteen graders that left, nobody didn't exit interview. To ask them why they left. Some of them are second generation Danville graduate kids. Parents are still paying taxes and choose to pay tuition and no exit interview, I think that's a key thing. Um, notice came out and said we have dwindling enrollment. So that's why we need to combine sports teams, but we're busting at the seams, cause we have way too many students. Well, we have three hundred and sixty-two this year, and in twenty twenty, we have one hundred, so we have less students, but we're busting at the seams, and then the. The student to adult ratio seems to be like four to one, if you look at the yearbook, it seems kinda crazy. Um, summer staff said full-time employees weren't in the building all summer, they basically got it off, so as a taxpayer. Why are they not in the building if we're paying them to be here? Um.
Summer staff were not in the building?
Nope, summer staff said that full-time employees, year-round employees, did not work during the summer, were rarely in the building. So vacation time being used, sick time being used. But we all see the salaries, they're public. Seems like you should be in the building more accessibly. Uh, let's see. Student conduct policies, are they gonna be enforced this year? Cause last year vaping was rampant in the bathrooms and nothing was done, there was a ton of S R funds. I don't know that vape detectors weren't in the bathrooms, I don't know if the S R funds were used for any of the building maintenance, like other districts did, if they just all come out of the general funds. Uh, let's see, and bullying, when, yes, I think I started that, one of the families said they pulled their kid out because they came to the school constantly. Asked about bullying policies, nothing happened. They started with the teacher, they went to guidance, they went to administration, nothing happened. So, oh, and Jimmy's policy, which you might be able to know.
Sure.
Kids are getting in trouble for being in the gym without an adult when the, the adult is actually in the weight room, so are they allowed to be in the gym?
Yes, there's a, there was an adult present at that particular event, and yes, Sean and I. And that particular employee and the, one of the young men uh all met in the lobby one evening and discussed.
Okay, and though the kids were like, I thought we were allowed to be there.
Yeah. Okay, so on, in terms of follow-ups, can um. Natalie, can you follow up with her on student conduct policy, uh accident, accident interviews is something we need to put on, put on a radar for the, the. Incoming staff, it's a thing that we, that you would wanna do for students that are leaving, this is gonna be something with the transition. I'll just need dwindling enrollment and busting at the seams, that's just things you're saying because.
Well, Mark's letter said dwindling enrollment that he sent out when he changed the SU position, or not the SU, sorry, the athletics being combined. So due to declining student numbers, and then we get, the building is busting at the seams because increased enrollment. I don't know how those two things can be living in the same era.
Not every student is an.
Well, no, so I, um, again, not, not, not to, not to get into, into an argument here, but dwindling enrollment, what didn't, that wasn't meant to cost one. In, in Danville school, that was meant to cost three schools.
But Danville's the one being asked to add space because we don't have room.
Uh, so, so scab it, so scab it, so.
That doesn't affect me, it's a fact.
So like I say, I. Uh, there we are, leave that one on, said high adult enrollment, this question has come up more than once, um, student ratios. Student ratios. So. Student staff ratio, so student staff ratio, uh, can we get some numbers on that maybe?
Yeah, I think the students that, at one point we were getting IEP numbers and.
Can, yeah, can you get us, so can we request from you IEP numbers? Oh, I guess that. Probably just sitting right here.
Yeah.
IEP numbers coming in, cause I know that we were as an SU, we, we generally get numbers like two ninety last year, but I don't know the number for. Specifically in this building and they made a student staff ratio and then I, I think really specifically how many are one-on-ones. Because if you're gonna do student staff ratio, you need to subtract one-on-ones before you can really. Those are sort of standalone things.
It might be, it's a sort of numbers of um. Like staff versus like with the number of students they, they actually interact within a day. So if you're looking at classroom teachers. You know, to see actual classroom enrollment, particularly I'm thinking, like, I think that. I, I think there's probably no argument, but like K to eight, but once people get into diverse, different. Classroom arrangements, I'm wondering is, is there? Right, the high school varies and there's, and there's gonna be, you know, classes that are significantly smaller than others. Um, and so I think that that's something that's important for us that. To be aware of when we're looking at staffing.
And do you have enrollment data yet for this year? Is that come?
Do October the first, you're gonna give us that on October the first. That's gonna be at the next meeting, enrollment data.
And something that um, if it's not too hard to get, I would be curious to know where students are coming from, how many tuition, you know, that we have the tuition pool. Are they coming from Peachum? Are they coming from Barnett or Barnett, well, yeah, high school, they could be Barnett, yeah. Or which regional towns or in general, where are they coming from?
Anecdotally, there's a lot of Peachum kids.
Yeah, they had a big rate, I think, this year, yeah.
Okay, so that is part of meeting planning, that is coming up in October. We're looking for some tuition student information, which is generally submitted to us on October the first. And then we're looking for an enrollment, some enrollment data. October the first, as part of your principal's reporting, please. And then thank you for that, you stayed under three minutes. Just so you know, if anybody's writing that down, you stayed under three minutes, which is our policy. And that's, that really happened. All right, and then. The next thing, I've gotta set up, are there any future agenda items? Anybody wants to talk about past those, which are part of the principal report? Um. I don't think I did an update from you, cause Randy can give us an update on your thing, on Jared's thing. I. Will probably have to have um, an update really on the superintendent more than anything else. There'll be, there might be a town committee update. And it'll be just as scintillating as this one was. Town meeting, committee, meeting update, the T M C M U. Town meeting, committee meeting update. And um. We're not gonna have anything and I guess maybe a preliminary budget. Mike said that we might have some preliminary budget data for the October meeting. Past that, we'll fill in as we need it.
Might there be more air handler stuff?
Not until superintendent becomes back. That's something he was gonna deal with once he comes back. We hope he's back by October. But um, when I spoke to him, he wasn't sure. And so like I say, we wish him well. We, all we can do is wish him well and when he gets back. And it's got a lot of head on, okay.
We would have the enrollment data at that point too, in October for.
That's part of the principal's report.
Okay.
So if you, maybe you could put that as part of the principal's report. Because that can just be in the report rather than have them present us with separate documentation. And then our, our regular meeting obviously is on the second, the first Tuesday of. October and then that is going to be. October the third. And then if you wanna start working on, um, what are you guys doing on October the tenth?
Uh, it's a Tuesday.
That's Tuesday.
Probably hanging out with you.
Is that the time?
The tenth.
As far as I know. There's a game, as far as I know, I'm okay.
October the tenth, um, building committee meeting. Six o'clock, room five oh four. Or the library, whichever one's open. Everybody write that down, October the tenth, Tuesday.
We're still in room five oh four?
No.
I'm not in here. I mean, I know originally it was, let's rotate through some classroom.
No, it was because that had individual desks and everybody had their own space and foot more equal.
Okay.
As opposed to being ordered over.
We can get into that bigger, I don't think we have enough seats in here.
I know at one point there was a conversation about like, also we can move to other rooms and then they were like, no, we can't. Okay, I just didn't know if there was. A rationale.
Okay, so that's that meeting, that meeting, uh, the book fair is October the sixteenth. Open house is actually. October the twenty-seventh, open house, September the twenty-seventh, excuse me, so write that on your calendars as well, September twenty-seventh. We'll be looking for volunteers at that. We're meeting next week, talk about volunteers for that as well. But that's not this meeting. And um, that's why I have for that. In terms of futures and items, anything else? Next meeting day, October third, pretend. And if nobody has anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn at seven twenty.
All second.
To motion and a second on the floor to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned, seventh.